I would like to call the Finance Committee meeting to order. This is a committee of the Board of Education, and our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
This is the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First order, second order of business is public comment. Is there anybody in the public who would like to make a comment for the Finance Committee of the Board of Education? Anybody like to make a comment?
I will, actually.
Yes.
Amber Burley, Detention Terrace. I just want to say in line what's been going on in the community. Thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you, Amber. Appreciate it.
Very much.
Last call for public comment. Hearing no more public comment, we will move on to discussion and possible action for the Financial Management Summary dated May 1st, 2023. And as per usual, I will kick it over to Mr. Bucci to give us the highlights.
Thank you very much, Ms. Herman. The good news is I'm going to pretty much deliver the same report this month as I've delivered the past few months.
We love that.
I've always valued consistency, and it's taken some time to get there, but we actually are in a position right now where most of the variances that we've been carrying this year, you know, are somewhat, that the projections we've been making are the same projections we've made in prior months. We have had surpluses in the areas of certified staff primarily, and that's largely due to vacancies in certain positions that we've had. Dr. Compton and I have discussed, you know, at times throughout the year that we are having significant overruns in the area of special education, as you can see on this report, and that whatever we can save would be certainly helpful to keeping us on budget and therefore, that's why you're seeing a significant surplus there. There is also a surplus due to the vacancy that occurred since December in the Associate Superintendent's position, et cetera. There's also typical, you know, vacancies that you will see or openings that you will see in regular instruction as well as the administration that makes up. And then there's also some surplus in guidance services as well. On the side of non-certified staff, one of the good and positive outcomes of our efforts this year has been a surplus in the custodial staff. We've managed to try to keep overtime to a, down to the required levels. There's always unnecessary overtime, but we've managed to get our arms wrapped around it with just being a lot more diligent about making sure that the number of people that are required and the times that the schools need to be open and when sports can be, you know, is utilizing the building, that we can try to get the most out of the hours that those buildings are open, off-hours. Employee benefits hasn't changed any. It's the same two or three people who had some benefit changes throughout the year that have resulted in a slight benefit, around $100,000. As I said a couple of minutes ago, the transportation and tuition for out-of-district special education is approaching, I think now, almost 30 students. We have somewhat stabilized. In fact, on last Tuesday night, I appeared before the Board of Finance as I courtesy that Dr. Compton and I agreed we would appear quarterly and give them an update. Mr. Suwaki had asked at that meeting to give him an update on this special education line item. What I said at that meeting was that when we submitted the report this year, it was for about $2.8 million worth of total costs relating to these 29, 30 students or so, that the threshold for us to receive any reimbursement is generally four and a half times the average salary. So if our average salary, average cost of student within the district is, say, $17,000 and $16,000, that means the first $80,000 that we incur of combined tuition and transportation essentially results in us receiving no rebate, and then it's only those costs over and above that. You file your second report in March because essentially between March and June, you pretty much can't accumulate $80,000 worth of expenses. So even though we put in 2.8 million, and last year we put in 2.4 million in costs, because of the threshold, we're not really seeing that much more of a reimbursement this year than last year. Secondly, the state has changed the calculation on this to a three-tier model, except that they haven't quite divulged to any of us, business managers in the state, exactly how that formula works. So all of us are trying to figure out exactly what's going to come in the May second piece of this reimbursement. The first piece we got back in February on a submission of $400,000 higher, or even at that point in time, $300,000 based on the December numbers, was $100,000 less. So we're guessing that the state is sending out a lower percentage of your total award in February than they did last year. Again, we're hoping, no one has suggested from everything I'm seeing in the traffic that we're going to see less. It's just we have to wait until May, this, this month actually, to see where we're going to come in on this. We're still projecting 675,000. It could be upwards of 700,000, and that would be wonderful. And we're hoping that we don't see more than 20,000, 25,000 more in additional costs relating to this one more potential student, that we may or may not get placed. It's very sketchy at this time of year as to whether schools will admit a student for the remaining couple of months. Facilities, at the last meeting, this committee had asked if we could make a presentation. I've spoken with Mr. Connors. He's going to put together a presentation to present before this committee on where we are. We're trying to resolve what it is we are going to do and not do this year as it relates to the facilities budget, given that if we were to try to accomplish everything that we had on our plate, we would clearly run into a deficit. So, and that's not going to happen. So aside from that, there is really nothing else here of any consequence that's different than what I've reported on in the past. We are moving toward getting it much better handled by, I would say, the report we presented at the beginning of June. We should have a pretty good, solid set of numbers of where we are as it relates to where we're going to come in at year end. The same is what we did last year. Once the budgeting process and the budgeting season is concluded, and we are hoping it will be concluded Thursday night with a positive vote from the taxpayers in town, we will be able to give you a better projection of how we're going to do next year also, and I'm expecting that we'll do that at the July meeting, as we did last year. With that, I conclude with my report.
Thank you. Any questions? I have one.
You were talking. It'll come back to me, maybe.
Maybe. Beth?
Nothing for now. Thank you. I have a question about the timely receipt of invoices, and if we feel confident that things are being invoiced to us in a timely manner, so we don't have any surprises towards the end of the year. I don't know. I'll let you down with our systems to make sure that you're tracking, you know, open POs, that we're waiting on invoices, but I'm just, as we get closer to the end of the year, I worry that, you know, what has happened in the past.
Well, let me tell you what we did last year. Let me tell you. Well, let me tell you what we did last year, because I was here last year. I wasn't in quite the same good shape as I am now in terms of being able to actually have confidence in the fact that things aren't going to come out of the woodwork.
Yeah.
And we spent a fair amount of time this year making sure that the PO system is being utilized across the board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We will put POs into the system for small items. My approach to POs is put them in the system. Okay? Now, there are certain things that we don't really know about. For instance, legal bills. Lawyers are notoriously months behind in sending legal bills. Dr. Compton circulated, I think, about last month, at one point in time, the progress we were making against the budget we had. I have, still have a PO in the system for probably about another $80,000 of legal bills, but I am projecting in here that we may see about a $48,000 surplus. We had a $200,000 budget. We spent probably $30,000 on mediation, on collective bargaining, excuse me. We've significantly reduced legal fees on both the non-special ed side as well as the special ed side. As it relates to items such as utility bills, they only run one month behind. So, and I may have mentioned this the last time I was here, we've been tracking utility usage, both from an electricity and a gas point of view in each of the schools now. I went all the way back to July of '21, partly because with the increases in the rates, I needed to understand the usage to be able to reasonably predict what our costs were going to be. So I can project June, say, for instance, based on what last June is, by virtue of looking at, well, what was May and what it may be. What was April and what did April be? And if I can see some consistency in the schools, plus we're out of the colder weather by the time we get to June, so you're not going to see those spikes you might normally see coming from heat. So across the board, what we typically do is we get through to the end of June, we accumulate what we know, we project what we don't know, and by the end of July, that all pretty much comes to wash. And we did not have a significant variance last year. For instance, we had $320,000 worth payables on the books last June, okay? And we had $320,000 worth of bills that ultimately got paid, and by August, we were like, oh, this was a fairly good projection. What that means is I don't wind up with these surprises that I have to carry into the following year and feed into my new budget.
Right.
Which we all know is not going to help us.
Right.
So I can tell you that I'm reasonably confident that we will probably know everything that we need to know by the end of June, and I know the meeting in July fortunately occurs, I believe on the 10th or 11th. And by the time we get to that meeting, I will know pretty much what our June 30th is.
So with the legal fees, are we telling our, the legal firms that we use, like, we need your invoices?
Yes. We actually.
Yeah. I'd like to add to address that. Monthly, we look and review every legal cost. Many times, they send you all logs as well. We're so pleased to let everyone know that we've had a big decrease in legal fees, both from any district expenditures, there were expenditures with contractual agreements and getting through contract negotiations. Also, a special thank you to Dr. Bull, and we've really worked hard, he has as well very much, in reducing special ed attorney fees. So I really would like you to see the difference. We calculated that difference and quite a bit of savings.
That's wonderful. Thank you both. Did it come back to your press?
Yeah. I'm just curious, did the new air conditioning, have they been turned on yet?
Okay, so yes, I can give you an update on that. So all but, I believe, two units have been fired up. And one of them happens to be in the offices of the people who cut the checks. So, but they've called for another installment payment. We have another payment that's substantial completion payment, and then there's the wholeback payment. They've been running, walking, going around the building, testing all of these units. Separate and distinct from that, so I'm fully expecting that within the next week or two. I looked at the schedule this morning that I received from Greenleaf. They send us a weekly schedule of what is on the docket for them to complete for the week. Also attached is essentially a Microsoft Project chart that shows your progress against goals. The only things that are not done at this point is there's a media center unit that we are still waiting to come in that should be in this week, and they will have to hoist that to the top of the building. But other than that, we are substantially complete on the air conditioning system. It has been very well managed.
That's great.
And we are, and honestly, you know, given some of the past things that have happened, we kept a very close eye on this project. And in fact, they called today and asked for a reference for another school district. And I was pleased to speak. Kevin Seabrook called. He's the president of Greenleaf. He called today and he said that, you know, how's it going? You know, we think it's going great. How do you think it's going? You're the client, and we think it's going great as well.
That's great to hear.
So, yeah. The only unknown in this project is what is going to be the additional burden on our electrical bills as it relates to firing up these 50 headers that they have in the room. There are about 25 condensers that they're connected to. Again, we're closed in July in August. So in the hottest months of the year, I don't, you know, we're not going to be running.
We're really not going to know until September.
But they are.
Before the month of September, the last week or August.
They are also going to give us a study on what they expect each of these units to draw in terms of energy based on climate. They're very high efficiency units, so we're expecting that, we'll have a rough estimate of where we're going to be in terms of the add-on amount of kilowatt-hours that these units are going to draw during the peak periods.
Great.
I'd just like to add to it that the one gentleman has done a great job. He's worked all winter in trying to make sure to meet the deadline. They basically had one point of contact and others when necessary. He did do a test run in my office. It was very cold. I said, turn it up. I think as far as efficiency, like you said, it's really going to do what we expect. Another thing for, we get out of school June the 13th, and for July and August, all the second floor and the entire wing that's separate from us will not be using it. So technically, it will only be the central office. Even the media center is not used in the summer, so that's another savings. So when you really look at cost savings, I think it's going to be, you know, overall, it's going to be, it's turned out to be a good project.
Yep.
They are meeting their deadline. If you remember the Building Committee, one of the things that Mr. Stanek and several of the Building Committee members wanted to make sure that it was in line to meet the timeline.
Great.
So I feel great about it. They are meeting the timeline, and I think you'll be pleased.
There are two successes, on time, on budget.
Mm-hmm.
That is what you strive for, and we are hitting on both cylinders.
Great. Anything else?
No. I'll move to recommend to the full board, May 1st, Financial Management Summary.
All in favor? Aye. unanimous. I do not have any comments except for sharing with everyone in the room that the budget vote is this Thursday at the community center from 6:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night. I'm looking at our first select moment to make sure I don't mess that up, and we absolutely appreciate anyone's, everyone's support for both the town and the school budgets. Anybody else? All right, with that.
Making motion to adjourn?
Yeah. All in favor? Aye. Thanks, guys.
Let's turn it around like this, yeah. There we go.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mom and Dad?
Not yet, dear. You want a picture with Mom and Dad, too, okay?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Oh, that's my dad.
Yes.
Smile.
Excellent.
Up next, Seymour High School.
All right, good evening. I'd like to have Kelsey Sproles join me. So, I'm very excited to have Kelsey with me tonight. She was nominated by her team. She is a student with a very good attitude towards all tasks. She is always willing to please, and she is always finding the positive in every situation and challenge. As you can tell, she's very talkative and exciting all the time. We treasure her at our school, and I'm very proud to have her be one of our Seymour champions today.
Okay, family, including grandmother, come on. Come on up here.
And I'd also like Natalie Kittless to join me. So Natalie was chosen as an upstander and then nominated as a champion because she is the cheerleader for White Team and really for the whole building. She's super hyped up on pep rally days and spirit week days. She is always bright and cheery, encouraging others around her to do their best. We're proud to have her on our team, and just a little secret, she is a Vikings fan, and I'm forced to be one, too. So, yay for Natalie. We're very proud of her.
Come on up, parents. Very proud.
And Brett Calabrese, he's not here. He's a class stack, top-notch student, ultra polite, he gets it, he knows how to act in specific situations, incredibly trustworthy. He constantly works hard, he gives 100% of his effort all the time. He's one of the most dependable people in the school. Great communicator, he's a natural leader who leads by example. He's calm, cool, and collective in all situations. We're proud of having him as a student. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it tonight. Sorry for him. Pictures?
Okay, the next category is superintendent student recognition. I'm going to ask Mr. Floyd to come back up because he's going to have the pleasure of introducing the top student and the second student, top of the class. Okay?
We have Duncan.
Yes. Duncan Prude.
Prude is here. And Madison Jarvis. Duncan is our valedictorian, we're very proud of him, and Madison Jarvis is our salutatorian.
Okay. We will do special recognition for these students on the award ceremony. We just wanted to go ahead and publicly announce.
All top 10 will be there.
All top 10 will be there, if you'll notice on Facebook today, as well as up on the website. First Lake Woman also put it up on her Facebook as well. We're very proud of these top two students, and we'll say more about them at the award ceremony. At this time... So Stephon, could you come up with an extra mellow for this, please? Okay, our boys' basketball team.
Fellas.
Floyd would like for you to come up.
Coach.
Yeah, I just slide up right here, guys.
All right.
Good showing, I'm proud of this group. I got on the wall, Brad.
All right. All right, couple words.
Okay.
The Seymour High School Boys Basketball Team finished the season ranked at number 25 in the state of Connecticut with a record of 19 wins and seven losses, while going a perfect 12-0 at home. Their 50-5 record season record is the best record they have had as a member of the North Tech Valley League, which the school joined in 1994. Again, so they had the best record since 1994, since they've been in the league. Ninety-four, it's a long time. The team won NBL Copper Division title with a record of 8-0, and advanced to the NBL Tournament semifinals both the second time in the last three years. The Wildcats fell one game short of playing for a state title at Mohegan Sun Arena as they reached the CIAC State Tournament semifinals for the first time since 1957. Individually, senior captain Kayden was an All-State selection, as well as All-NBL juniors and next year's captains. Michael Rosetti and Indrit Parat were named All-NBL Copper Division. Seymour High School Boys Basketball Team were third.
I'd just like to say how proud I am of this basketball team. Most of you know that I come from a state that really, former state that really values basketball, and I think it's also just important to emphasize your great accomplishments this year, and we're very proud of you, and also, too, to the UConn Huskies for winning the NCAA. But Connecticut, I have to hand it, basketball is really to be commendable. Not only did you have UConn with the national champs, but the great showing that you have done representing Seymour High School. So, folks, we're proud of you. Mr. Smalley, you want to say something? You spend a lot of time in this group.
Well, I just want to say that the accomplishment in the NBL to win that many games is tremendous accomplishment because basketball in the NBL is the number-one sport. No disrespect to other sports, but it's the most competitive, and to accomplish what you guys done is tremendous honor and credit to your hard work, your coaching, staff, and the fans who supported us during that time. And I was lucky enough, my first job that I, well, my first action when I joined Seymour was to hire a young buck as the head coach. His name was Joe Eric Yeller. Twenty years ago.
Yeah, not so young anymore.
So you could blame me.
Great job, guys. Tighten your knee. He wants to discuss the senior trip again since the Boston trip didn't make it to be added. He just came to my office at about 2:30 this evening, and they kind of have a plan B.
Student reports, Thailand and Sophia.
So, some school-wide stuff. Our annual prom is this Saturday, May 6th. It's an evening at AquaTurf, it's for the junior senior class. Ms. Scars, one of the science teachers at the high school, is organizing underclassmen field trip to Lake Compound because they haven't gotten to do anything in their high school career yet, so I believe it's just for freshmen and sophomores. We're invited to that. AP exams began this morning at 8:00 a.m., and they're going to take place for this week and all next week, varying days based on the course. Today was college decision day. Seniors were encouraged to wear apparel with their college or future endeavor which they're pursuing. Through the next month, seniors have several end-of-year activities. We have Holiday Hill Picnic Day, the Awards Night, Senior Banquet, and the Honors Breakfast, which is inclusive of all grades. The buttons, bows, dresses, and more will open across from the cafeteria and have available dress attire for any occasion. I believe that this is similar to the prom kind of like dress give-back that they did. They're kind of standing on it. Graduation is June 9th, as you all know. I could say it's fastly approaching, which is crazy. The 12-day recycling challenge, which we spoke about in the last meeting, is currently going on. It was approved, and it seems to be going fairly well. And we're talking about a spirit week leading up to one of the NHS events that Sophie's going to talk about.
And then, so for National Honor Society, their ceremony is June 1st, and that's where we renew old members and inject new members. National Honor Society is also trying to hold a decathlon again. We had one last year, which got a lot of the student body involved, and it was a big hit with the students, so we're trying to get that to happen. For Best Buddies, April 29th was the Friendship Block fundraiser, and that's where Best Buddies, with all the chapters across Connecticut, got to meet together and do a fundraiser, and some of the members from our chapter went from our school. For Sports, tennis had a match today against Ansonia. The Girls and Boys Track Team has a meet tomorrow at Holy Cross against Holy Cross and Kennedy. Softball had a home game today against Ansonia. Baseball had a home game against Ansonia. And Golf was away today against Woodland and Oxford.
Do you have a theme for the prom yet? I hope so, right?
I think it's, yes, something a little Paris, like in Paris or something.
I am confirming that is indeed the theme.
All right, any other questions for our student reps? All right, thank you. Item four, we have public comment. Anyone from the public would like to make a comment?
No, I talked about Mike.
What's that?
I already spoke to you about it.
Oh, can I go on twice? Yes, call for the other comment. All right, public comment is closed. Item four, reports and presentations. Football Kickoff Club fundraising proposal. Ms. Burton.
Yeah, she's not gonna, she's gonna stay. Yeah, but he's gonna turn the camera right towards you. However you want to do it, don't want to do that. Okay, however you want to do it.
Can you, um, do I miss that? Well, I don't know if I emailed, I emailed the letter for the donations. I don't think that's this part, right?
I have given them the nice list of the donations. Okay, this is different.
So this is, this is different than that, so what that is. So what we're here for today is to present a fundraiser request that is going to involve the weight room and putting stuff on the walls. So, we've been informed that the proper approval process is to come here to present that to you guys. What it is, and Mike, I gave that all to you, so I don't even, what it is, is on there, I think is a print-off of the page from the fundraiser that we're intending to do. It is a buy a tile. I kept saying buy a brick, and I actually had a sample sent to us, but it was a real brick, so we're not going to be able to put that up on the wall. So what it is, is it's basically a tile that is, it adheses to the wall. The proposal, I think there's going to be some question about who can put it up on the wall. I hope that that, those details can be dealt with later because we really want to get moving to get this fundraiser approved. And it's going to be a fundraiser that goes out to the community to purchase a tile that has specific engraving on it that they could commemorate their family, a loved one, whatever. We recently, and I included on the last page there, a quote for a purchase that we just did. I know a lot of you are familiar with the fact that we have been trying to bring forth proposals for the weight room to be, equipment to be upgraded. And the first stage of what we're doing is the quote, I haven't care, it's for about $43,000. Well, this is $20,000. I printed the wrong one, it's double this. We have half of it, we have it all coming now, we paid half of it, we have to pay the other half in September. So this fundraiser's intention is to supplement our other fundraising that usually supports our full budget for the year to support the weight room donation that we intend to make. The second picture is where the intended tiles are going to go. The idea is for them to go there. So I don't know, if you want to add anything, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a really neat idea. You know, it's an opportunity for people in the community to be a part of kind of Seymour forever, not just necessarily athletics, or not necessarily just a football team, but you say, you know, part of my family, you know, and it's up there for as long as that, you know, that room's standing. You know, I think it's a great opportunity for all families, any athletics, whether the family still lives in Seymour, or they moved away, it doesn't matter. You know, I know there's a person just passed away who was part of the program for a long time, and, you know, they want to, they donate some money, and they want their name up on the tile. I think it's a great opportunity to kind of give a lasting legacy for a lot of people in the community. So, as far as the fundraising and the community, I think it kind of goes anywhere.
I also want to add that the Wildcat Kickoff Club is obviously spearheading this, but the benefits are going to be felt throughout the entire Seymour High School community, not just the other athletic teams, the physical education classes, the proposed upgrades to the weight room. With what this equipment donation will do is it will increase a significant amount of space in there, so baseball will have a lot easier access, cheerleading will be able to have access in there. So this is not, the Wildcat Kickoff Club is spearheading this, but it is to benefit all of the future Seymour athletes and students in the high school, as well as the football team.
Any questions?
I just think it's a great fundraiser. Fundraisers normally, they're just approved by the superintendent of this embossed facility. Since it's your building along with the town, it's just, it's a good thing to just share what the vision is. I think it's wonderful, it's been done in a lot of schools, it's going to look great. Also, it's what you mentioned in regards to softball team, baseball team, practices, and they're the other down Saturday. So this room is being multiused, it's multi-purposeful, so I think this is great. Kudos for the great donation of the equipment, I think it's pretty amazing. I just think it's great what you have done and the hard work that's gone into this.
Thank you.
Yeah, just because we had to do the record, so we didn't review this, and I know we've heard before we can, but I didn't have a law.
He's been told about this, yes, I called him up, I sent an email, I shared. He seemed to be okay with it, he didn't seem to have a problem, but he was made aware of it because his director of facilities, he's most important.
I'm not, I have, we haven't picked a color. So if you guys have an opinion on that, we haven't done anything except for put the cart in front of the horse, which is basically buying the equipment, right? Actually, this is all faux, like I, this is my sympathy for you guys, but no, that, none of that has been decided. So any input that you guys need to give on that, I've told the fundraiser, I'm actually getting a sample of what the real thing will look like on Wednesday, which I can, I can get to you, Dr. Compton, so you can share that. But, yeah, none of that has been determined.
No, I think it would be one set style.
Yeah, it would be one color with one engraved color.
I just want to say thank you, Amber, for coming out. You just had surgery, you said a few days ago.
Yeah, I have someone on my shoulder.
That's what you call real dedication. So, thank you.
I was just thinking, you said one color, I was thinking, knowing the tradition here, that we did blue, gold, blue, gold, blue, gold. That's a suggestion.
Yeah, I'm certainly open to it if you want to do that, and probably get different samples to see how that would look, and then we can make a judgment decision on that. Absolutely.
If I was correct, when I first came here, I said blue and yellow, I was told, blue and gold.
But, yeah, we can certainly, you know, see what that would look like.
I don't think all those details have to be ironed out until, I mean, we've got to sell some first, right? We have to figure out how we're going to administer this, so that's... So I still have to get the details with the actual company. They do have a website-based system, but I'm not, we have to figure out how we're going to, if we're going to do them in blocks of 100, and have them printed in blocks of 100, and then open it up again, like what the timeframe's going to be, like there's still all the details of that. We just needed to get approval from you guys, and we did have the central office sign off on the fundraiser form before today.
I'll be pending your approval to put it up the wall.
My question is on the pricing, is that the price that a person would pay for the tile?
No. That's the price to us. So our intention is to sell, we're not really set on the price yet, we have to figure out what we're going to do, but it's going to be anywhere from $150 to $200, so, which I think is fair to have a, I would pay that, to have a tile with my name on a school that obviously has a very devout, longstanding following of, you know, a lot of people from Seymour don't leave Seymour, it's a very tight-knit community, so depending, and that also will give a lot of profit to us. That'll be at least $150 to $170, basically, of profit per brick. So if we sell 100 bricks in our first round, we're going to come out with about 17, $15 to $17,000, and our goal is to make up for the other half that we haven't paid yet.
Would the installation be done by a professional, by individual company?
No, I think that's still subject to being answered because I think there's union contracts that impact what the facilities folks can do and not, but Steve and Mike actually were willing, it's really not rocket science, it's just a self-adhesive tile that you put, there's no grouting involved, it doesn't require a professional. But if the facilities folks have to get involved, then, you know, I talked to Dr. Compton, I said if a nominal fee to pay to have someone install that justifies a $43,000 donation to the school system, then it is what it is.
Well, I would just like to follow up with a different question. I'm not certain, but if the walls are epoxy paint, then whatever that adhesive is on the tile, it has to be compatible so that it stays in place and doesn't eventually...
Fall off, right. I mean, I work at Yale Health System, so I don't even really know what epoxy is unless it goes in my bones. But I think what will happen post this is Mike and I will try to set up some individual time with the director of facilities. I think putting it on the wall is quite a ways out. We have to, we have to get this up and running, we have to figure out how we're going to administrate it, we have to organize it, I have to figure out which one of my lovely board members behind me is actually going to do all the work. No, I'm just kidding, it'll probably be me, but, and then we have to get them printed, we have to get them sent in, and we have to formulate a plan for how they're going to be put up. So that, if, if the board would, I don't know how you guys vote on this, if you vote on approve it now with conditions that you want the full rendered plan to come to you before we do that, we're willing to do that, there's a lot of things that still have to fall in place, but we didn't want to do unnecessary work without having your approval to move forward. Well, she did approve it, but there was a lot of discussion before this meeting that if it was involving the building within the school, that we did have to come to this board. So we have a green light now?
Yes, and we'll work with Tim Connors and work with your wall and all the, you said the paint, and help get it painted for you.
Okay.
Whatever needs to be done.
Perfect. Cool. That was easier than we thought, right? And then the list of equipment that's on there, I don't know what I need to do for that, but that basically, we did buy first and asked for forgiveness later. And Allison Brett actually is here, she, she was, I got the club from her, and she did a really good job, and part of the donations came from her reign as president as well, so thank you, Allison. Oh, do we? Oh, I got another? Okay. Okay, well, I'll just sit here.
Yes, we're very pleased to have Jonathan Postet with us tonight. Many years ago, he did a strategic plan with Seymour Boardhead. He's also done a lot of great work with Connecticut Department of Education. He's involved with the new teacher evaluation process. He's with Advanced Ed, he's executive director, so I think we're very lucky tonight to be here and give this presentation. It's something that I would like for us to consider into the next year of possibly doing this. You can tell some of the districts and where you have completed this type of planning, and all the focus is on student achievement. and all the focuses on student achievement and student success.
Thank you, Dr. Compton. And I'm sorry, I didn't have the gold shirt, so I went with yellow and blue, sorry, and whatever he's been eating for the last twenty years, you should all do it, because he looks exactly the same as the last time I saw him when I was here in 2003. This, I, I'm a six-year Board of Ed survivor, I know what it's like to give up yet another evening of your life, so I'm going to do this pretty, pretty quickly, but many, many of you have heard or survived strategic planning in a traditional sense, and I want to be very clear from the beginning that this is not that. Most traditional strategic plans try to gain support by casting a wide net, by essentially giving everyone who participates a trinket or a goal or something in the plan that benefits them, and you try to build that by getting as many of those people around you as you can. The problem is, almost every district is running at capacity, so there's no place to go to get all those things, so everybody feels good and then nothing happens. So what I've done for the last decade is use a process that I developed called strategic coherence planning, and it gains support by focusing on the things that are pretty much unanimously agreed upon by everyone in the planning team as being the most important things the district needs to do, and that is ensure that every Seymour student leaves with the skills and dispositions they need to be successful in life, learning, and work beyond school. And essentially, the entire process is designed to say, okay, what are those things that you believe are those most important skills and dispositions, and what is the district doing to ensure that in fact every student has them before they go? So that is the primary difference between a traditional strategic plan and what we are proposing to do here. This is the goal for every public school, to prepare every student for life, learning, and work beyond school, I think that is an eleven-word mission that you could all live with. Of course, what does it mean to be prepared for life, learning, and work beyond school? Your current kindergarteners are the class of 2035, that is what we are shooting for. We can't be thinking about what was good preparation in nineteen ninety, in two thousand, in two thousand and ten, we need to be thinking ahead and shooting for that. This is an example of a vision of a graduate from another district that I've worked at here in Connecticut, Region Seventeen, thinks critically, demonstrates respect and kindness, displays character, communication, growth mindset, contributes productively, whatever your answer to the question is, what does every student need to be able to do to be successful in life, learning, and work beyond school, that's what we tie everything in the plan to. And this is the first step to refine and define that for Seymour, it aligns with what the high school has to be for any ASC anyway, so it's not duplicating work, it's the same, it's the same work. And then we go from there, making that decision, to then analyzing the systems of learning, curriculum instruction, and assessment to ensure that you have the best possible alignment with that answer, and you can assure and guarantee parents that their students are going to leave your district with those skills and dispositions. We do it by focusing everything on the most critical decisions, so we narrow everything down to the most important two or three skills, the most important two or three dispositions. Once we get to the end of the plan, there's going to be a very small set of goals, all designed around the most important systems change required to meet that focus on those students' skills and dispositions. The systems that we are talking about are the alignment of the district administration and the board with those student goals for learning, so a very strong alignment between what the board wants for students in the district, the most important instructional environments to support those goals, your measurement and assessment of those things so you can be accountable to yourselves, your parents, and to the community for making sure that every student gets them, having the community participate in the process, board regulation and policy, how is it aligned with helping that happen, and resource deployment, putting your money where your mouth is around that vision of the graduate. So we know what this looks like when it goes well, when it is aligned, and once we have it set, we determine what is currently happening in the district, so you define what you want, you go out and you look at what you are currently doing, and the gap between that and what you need to do to achieve your goal is where the plan work occurs. And how we do that, each of those seven areas has a series of definitions and questions, we do a data scan, we have six data teams, they go out, they collect data on how well the district is aligned with those goals for each of the systems, we score the alignment with those goals, you have a very specific rating and scorecard, if you will, to reflect on in the district. This also sets a benchmark for you as a board to look down the road to see how that's changing, to see how that's improving as the plan is implemented. Every team comes back with a scorecard for how the district is doing, the team looks to continue and deepen practices that are already working in the district that are aligned with the goals, there are things that are happening that maybe shouldn't happen, and we need to start some things if there are those gaps, but the reason for this is we are not out to redo everything, everything that you're doing that is aligned with where you want to go, we build on and we celebrate, we work to close the gap between what is needed and what is currently happening. This is an example, once all that work is done, the strategic planning team is going to highlight the areas in the data where you see the biggest gap between what is needed and what is happening, and those areas represent the work that will cause the biggest impact going forward. Because these are phrased as gaps, we then convert them into goals or strategies, positively talking about what the work would look like when it's done, and lay out exactly what progress toward that goal would look like. So for each of the gaps and the strategies, we lay out where the district was when we collected the data, and we show you what progress is going to look like as things play out. So as a board, you can go back to that scorecard, you can go back to these change rubrics, and you can talk about what's happening, how are we doing, what progress are we making, are we doing the things that we said we wanted to do? We look at what the impact of systems are, so people who are doing the work know who is going to be involved and who's going to be part of making the change, and then we lay out the steps according to the scope and the sequence of the work that needs to be done. We are going to use a tool called thought exchange, which allows the entire community to be part of this process twice, once in asking them what do they think those critical skills and dispositions are, and then later in the process, how well do you think the district is doing in meeting those expectations? All that data will get processed by the strategic planning team, but it's important to know that not only is the team going to be involved, and the data scan people are going to be involved, but there'll be opportunities for the whole community to participate as well. In the end, you're going to have two different ways to access the results, there's going to be the, the full story, this is usually about fifty pages work, which tells the entire narrative, the whole process shows all of the work, we also produce what I call the elevator pitch version, which basically summarizes everything in the plan in one page, so people know exactly what you're trying to do and how you're trying to do it. If, if you followed the news, the emergence of artificial intelligence, the emergence of 5G technology, there is no way to predict what 2035 is going to look like, but we know the basic skills and dispositions that students are going to need to adapt to whatever that reality is, and that's what we're trying to create. So I'm a former history teacher, I love this quote, "I can't promise you that we'll be able to build the future, but we will be able to prepare your students for whatever that future is." That's it. And Dr. Compton promoted me, I'm actually the assistant executive director. I don't want my boss to like watch on TV and think that I attempted a coup here in Seymour on a Monday night, so. Questions?
And, um, Chris.
Can you talk a little bit about how the overall strategic plan would then fuel, or I assume it would fuel each individual school improvement plan, and just the role that school improvement plans play?
That's an excellent question, so, in general, what I try to encourage everyone to do is, nothing happens in this plan that isn't going to impact everybody. I talked about the, the focus, right? So if you pick the three most important skills, there's no teacher in the district that is immune or absolved from helping to work on those. We can all be teachers of critical thinking, we can all be teachers of problem solving. So if that is the plan, if a goal in the plan, then I would expect to see mirrored language in school improvement plans. I would expect to see mirrored language in individual goals by teachers and administrators. One of the things that kills strategic planning is you have a goal-setting system where everybody gets to set a goal that they think matters, and in the end, you get three hundred different goals, and you may make little progress in all of them, but you never see the impact across the district. So these are going to be framed in such a way that they compel buildings, departments, individuals to row in the same direction, because if you fail in these goals, you're shortchanging your students in terms of their preparation for their future.
I'd like to provide more information, we just wanted to do the presentation tonight.
Can I do a, a time change, turn around, start to edit?
So generally, the proposal I gave to Dr. Compton, starting a formation meeting at the end of this school year, all of the work really happens from September to December, you'll be done by January, you'll know what your primary goals are before your budget season next year. It's about six months, start to finish.
Can you share some of the districts that you've just recently done?
Sure.
Yeah.
I've done about a hundred and fifty of these over the last thirty years, believe it or not. My most recent, this past year in Branford, Connecticut, in East Chester, in Chapelqua, New York, I just finished facilitating the State of Connecticut's next five-year plan, the State Board of Ed's five-year plan, I just finished facilitating the group that redesigned teacher evaluation for Connecticut, all in the same principles, and there's going to be a legislatively created commission to modernize educator certification at State of Connecticut, I believe I'm going to be asked to facilitate that as well. I have a planning resume that I think I gave to Dr. Compton that lists all of them, and some districts like Glastonbury, I've run four, four consecutive, they, they rolled their eyes when I walked into town because they know what's going to happen next, but anyway, and I can give you lists of board members that have been through it, of superintendents who have been through it, so lots of references if you need those as well.
Sure.
One more question, could you talk a little bit about what the board interaction and level of involvement is from that September to December timeframe?
Sure. Generally, there are two or three board members who participate on the committee, and they report back, but that can look however you want it to look.
I mean, if the board at those meetings, you all know, set up with that meeting.
Right. I mean, I have done it where everyone participated, but it gets complicated because we have to post and all of that, but essentially, the board participates in a way that it is most comfortable with it, and generally, that is, a couple of you sit on the planning team, and you come back and report, or I can come back and report, or Dr. Compton can come back and report, and everything, everything happens in an Google Docs environment, there is one central online document that tracks the progress of the entire process in real time, and I could actually share that document with all the board, so if you could, if you have it somewhere, you could log on and read the whole thing and keep up that way as well.
Then you'd be really great for the whole board to have the option.
Sure. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Take care. Good to see you.
Thank you so much. Great, great presentation.
Thank you. All right, next up is curriculum and instruction update.
That was a wonderful presentation, Jonathan, and I'm just 2035. That's great. So with curriculum, we have been extremely busy, one of the things that we're working on is the science of reading, as you all know, we looked at four different programs, Amplify from Amplify, inter-reading, which is Hooten, Methley, Heartport, Mindview, Parvis Savas, and Wonders. Teachers and administrators had come and previewed the curriculums, and at this time, inter-reading has the most votes, there was a score of one to five, and certain criteria that the teachers and administrators were looking for, and some of that was that they liked about inter-reading so far is foundational skills, the phonics, the word work, the spelling, the small instruction, the handwriting, they said the writing, the grammar, and the process writing, they love the letters, the C centers that are built in, and it's helpful not having to create it, and you don't have a chart in your notes because the information's compiled after that, but if you'd like the information from there, I'll certainly happen to share that with you as well. They love the big books, the basil, the decoders, and they love that they will read the books, top-notch, guided readings, vocabulary cards, high-frequency words, they thought that the ELL, the English Language Learners, and the social emotional learning portion of the reading program is strong, they liked the questioning, the turning talks, essential questioning, they felt that the program itself was kid-friendly and it was easy for a teacher to navigate, so those were what they came up with, that they liked about this program in particular. Dibley Online Reading Assessment, they're, I have provided according with three-year quote, and Mr. Lucky is being, getting them a grant for that, we would like to begin that, that is part of the requirements from the State of Connecticut, that we do K through three, and also has a dyslexia screen, and all of the administrators were in favor of the Dibley Division, which is that one right there. The summer ELL program, English Language Learners, right now, we worked in both of the elementary schools, and we have eighteen students who are on board or attending that, and we'll be providing transportation for them, the whole side of the special education program, held in Chapel School, it goes from July third to the twenty-seventh, and it's Monday through Thursday. So far, we have one person at the high school that signed up for summer curriculum writing, and they will be working and collaborating with the math department there. The IXL program, that Dr. Compton brought forward to us, our teachers and administrators are loving the program, we have it currently in math, we have trial for reading, all the administrators at every level, high school, middle school, and elementary, all are interested in the reading and the math for their schools. We're going to continue with Alexia, online program, at least for one more year is what we're looking at as a district. Substitute teachers, I sent out a remind message to everyone in our district, from every one of those schools, and not one person responded that they want to be substitute teachers, so that's an area that we're definitely falling short in, if you have any creative ideas, I'm open to any suggestions as well. I was surprised that we didn't have anyone there, or that. Pre-K, we are looking at free classrooms next year, and both elementary schools have asked for the creative curriculum as a resource for their preschool teachers, and again, Mr. Lucky's working on a grant for us for that portion of their foundations right now. Right now, Bungie School, Mrs. Reed, has been piloting that in kindergarten. And both Mr. Elect and Mrs. Albertson and Mrs. Reed would like it for kindergarten and for first grade for next year. So, we're hopefully going to stand on board with that. One of the things that curriculum instruction also looks at is the homelessness of any mentally. Currently, as you can see, there's five students, so we will have to be looking at the grant that goes to the state department for that. English Language Learners, I want to thank the four people that did the testing in our district. And we should have some results on our English Language Learner from the state either the end of May, early June. Currently, we have three students, or we have the homebound tutoring at this time. We just completed the NWA math assessment, so we will be looking at our scores very closely soon in each of our schools. I've also given you a quote for that there. Smarter Balance begins next week. And our Special Development Evaluation Committee will be meeting towards the end of May. I've already met with Minkin on that to come up with a plan. And we felt after the Smarter Balance testing, that would be a good, good resource. And the last thing I just wanted to share for the cause of walkers, for crazed walkers, and, you know, going into each of the buildings and just giving the teachers some comments and sending some pictures along, two other things are going wonderful in our schools. And really proud of everything that I'm seeing and everyone that I'm meeting. So, that is my update for this one thing.
I have two questions.
Okay.
Do you want to prepare ourselves? Do you know what I'm saying? Do you want to prepare ourselves?
210, we should have the certification at 100, I believe, 53 of the bachelor's. And that's all okay. And I mean, even if we're comparable, the other districts, it's obviously not enough.
That's just something in the back of my head. And the second thing, the PDAC committee, when we looked at the calendar for this upcoming, can we make sure that we stay consistent when scheduling? So that maybe it's like the third Thursday of every month, so that it's not all over. You know what I mean?
You were scheduling.
PD days.
The PD days? They seem to be all over. We were trying to look at.
So, whatever you approved are the same dates that we're looking at? Is that what you mean?
Right. We'll go back and send the calendar again, and we'll also talk about the PD days.
The PD days that were already set for this year and couldn't change.
Okay.
So, we wanted to just go back to how it used to be and say, I'm glad you were.
I remember.
Where there was some sort of frequency.
Help you?
Yeah, please.
When we reviewed the 23-24 calendar, we were told we couldn't change the PD days because they had already been established with a committee. So, what we're asking is that when you do this, I assume the 24-25 calendar, that there's consistency to the PD days, like the third Thursday of every month, from a parent perspective and just a routine perspective. That was kind of what we talked about.
And that's what they said in the past, that it had been established, and therefore, we needed to look and go back to the committee.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I thought we, I don't know that we ever walked away from that with the exception of moving some days to Fridays, when they felt, when they felt before a three-day weekend.
Next year's calendar, from what I remember, they were kind of scattered all over.
Yep. All right. So, that way, in moving forward for the next year, then you know what our obstacles are. We've made some progress, but we couldn't complete everything.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments? Let's get the subs in our.
Thank you.
Very good.
Item 5B, special ed enrollment report. Anything you'd like to point out, or any questions for Dr. Boyle?
I would just like to say thank you too about the training, Dr. Boyle, that you and Allison Brett and some other psychologists and counselors did. You want to say something?
Sure. So, we had the second in a series of two parent presentations about the new online system. A lot of the work was done by Mrs. Brett as far as the planning and the preparation. You know, it was about, the first one was a general overview of the new CTSEDS program and how the documents differed between the previous IEP and the current IEP. The most recent training was more focused on a parent portal aspect to this program that, right now, is optional, but it's going 100% live, starting July 1st. So, we wanted to give a preview to parents now so that they would be prepared when the parent portal side became 100% live for next full year. The enrollment figures that I showed you somewhat speak for themselves. I was asked a question last month as far as 504 numbers at the middle school. I did do some research and spoke to the school counselors who, throughout the district, school counselors case-managed the 504 plans. And then they did further research, and the quick answer is, this month, we're reporting 30 students as having a 504 plan at the middle school. It seems underrepresented if you look at the pattern in the other buildings. It actually is overrepresented. There were a few students, when they went through the list, that had exited because they moved on to special education, but never got exited from a 504 plan. So, while it looks like those numbers are depressed, at least as of this month, we didn't go back through previous months because that would have been very challenging to do that kind of analysis. But if they actually are, you know, close to accurate, we'll bring up a couple of students for next month's data set.
Yeah, I totally appreciate the research.
Sure, I completely followed it. So, I mean, are you saying that some students went from a 504 to an IEP?
Yeah, that happens. It's not typical for that to occur. But right now, the question last month, as I understood it, was, whatever the number was, if it's a 27, that that seemed to be underrepresented of the trends that we see at the other schools? Because every month seems to increase by a couple. And what I'm saying is, it's not underrepresented, and if anything, it actually may be a little bit inflated to what the actual numbers are, just to clean up that data set.
It's still just quite an anomaly of a trend line. I mean, every other school in the district approaches by the end of the year the number that they were at the end of the previous year. So, here we are, like at Bungie School, at the end of June of last year, they had 29 students on a 504. They're having 20, they have 27 now with only one left in the year. CLS, 45 last June, 45 this May or June. High School, 63 last June, 65 now. But SNS, 55 504s last June and only 30. So, it just raises a flag to me that says, you know, are we just kind of letting 504s expire, if that's the right term? Are we, are we saying, you know, we don't need 504s for as many kids? It's just, it just looks so.
I can understand.
Different than the other three schools do.
No, I can understand the question, and certainly, you know, it is not following the typical trend that we see. You know, I could go on for a very long time about the nuances of 504. Some 504s do expire, because if I go on the school ski trip and break my arm right before Smarter Balance, I might need a 504 plan because I need a scribe for written response.
So, some of them are intentionally time limited.
A student with a different type of disability, that's a lifelong type of disability, those plans typically do not expire, depending on a variety of things. But, so, there are some, but that would be the case not just at the middle school.
Right, right.
That would be the case everywhere. So, while I can certainly understand the question, the school counselors actually pulled up their roster of every student with a 504 plan, and then went into CTSEDS and saw who was coded as having a 504 in the entire school. And went kid by kid and double-checked the caseload. So, the number says 30, the actual number is 25.
Total accuracy. I think we just need to really look, and I think in understanding what truly a 504 plan is about. There are a lot more kids, too, that we're seeing that are diagnosed with ADHD, anxiety. There are a lot of emotional issues with some kids and some really medically, it needs to be diagnosed and it needs to be acted upon. And some people really need to look close and really make sure that child is getting what they need. A 504 is important. It's sometimes elementary, yeah, it doesn't go on, but there are some times, once you're on a 504 plan, it goes all the way to college. And that you get those right accommodations. So, I think that's something we've all got to look at, making sure each and every child is totally, whether they need a 504, or whether they don't, it's just, it's out there for what is truly needed.
I think the statistics, really, that's important for you to see. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Item 6, consent agenda. I'm going to remove the three items under D. And we'll entertain a motion for the other four sections.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the removal of items D, 1, 2, and 3.
Motion by Ms. Harmon, second by Ms. Happfield. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0.
Chris, who second that?
Jay.
Thank you.
Item 7, items removed from the consent agenda. The first up is the weightlifting equipment.
I'll make a motion that we accept, we approve the donation from the Seymour High School Kickoff Club of several pieces of equipment for a weightlifting room, and ask that the board, that we direct the superintendent to determine the placement of this donation.
Motion by Ms. Schmello, second by Ms. Harmeling, and Ms. Burton, this is this, right?
That is not just the weight room equipment. That's everything that we've donated since 2019.
Okay, so the letter does just include?
That's everything. I did all, everything donated since then. There's some iPads, there's, there's, there's a bunch of different stuff.
Okay, so then I should adjust my motion to say that we approve a donation from the Seymour High School Kickoff Club of.
All equipment.
All pieces of equipment.
To clarify.
Donated by the kickoff club.
Are you okay with me?
All right. Any other discussion?
Just to say thank you, because we would either go without that equipment, or it would have to be funded through the budget. So, thank you very much to everybody involved in the kickoff club this year, past years.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0. Item 2, has a $250 donation.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the donation of $250 from Mr. Milo Torowitz for the after-school stem program at Bungie School, and ask the superintendent to determine the placement of this donation.
Second.
Motion by Jay, second by Ed. Any other questions, comments? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 7-0-0. And then finally, we have a Seymour Culture and Arts donation of $1,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent for approval of a donation of $1,000 to the Seymour Public Schools' Mark Merrill Anti-Filial Program, and ask that the superintendent determine the placement of this donation.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Harmeling, second by Ms. Happfield. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0-0. All right. Item 8, discussion and possible action. I'm actually going to move that we add to the agenda a discussion from Mr. Kate Endresik about the.
We have a senior class.
Senior class trip.
And also, we'll need to add about.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, about the one.
Motion by myself, second by Ms. Schmello. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? All right, so item, yeah, we're going to make that item 8A. For you, sir.
So, I don't have anything, a paper document or a presentation, because it's just kind of last minute. But June, well, I met you guys two months ago about a class trip to Boston for three days. Unfortunately, we did not have enough people to sign up to where it would be worth going, because it would boost the price a lot. So, I've talked with a lot of students, a lot of senior students, and they all want to do something. So, we came to the conclusion that a trip to Six Flags would be something that they, that everyone would want to do. So, we're looking at the date of June 1st, and we don't have the price set out yet, but it'll be less than $100. And I know that some, some of you guys might think that it's not educational. So, I asked the science teachers to put together a little worksheet, just like about the science of the actual roller coasters and the rides and all that, and the physics behind it. I don't really have anything else.
So, it's out of state, that's why we have to approve it.
Yeah.
This, this isn't overnight? It's just go up and come back?
We would be around 8:45 in the morning and get back at around 4:00.
Weekday?
Thursday.
And this has Mr. Freud's blessing as well, right?
Anything for the students, Dr. Compton? As my understanding.
They tried. They just lost an opportunity.
I know. And they tried very hard, and I just commend you all on that project and how much work went into that Boston trip.
I make a motion to approve the senior class trip to Six Flags on Thursday.
You first.
You first.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Happfield, a second by Mr. Baboudiac. Can I just have you and Mr. Freud and Dr. Compton work together? As long as they have their blessing, I don't think any of us would mind, except me.
Am I making reference to this trip? There is one. So, I've done a trip to Six Flags before with the, with the music program. And if the bus parks in the, there's a portion of the parking lot that's actually in the State of Connecticut.
That's what he told me, that then he says the other park's in another state.
If the bus parks in the Connecticut parking lot, they don't have to pay for a charter bus. So, that's what we're going to do to keep it closed down.
How do you ensure that?
You just ask them to park in the Connecticut. Then the kids walk across the border into Massachusetts.
Good question. Is that rule about it has to be a charter bus if you're going out of state, is that a Seymour policy rule, or is that a state policy?
I'm pretty sure it was Seymour policy.
Are we fancy?
No.
I'm sure there's.
No, I think Mr. Freud, I think you're wrong. That's a state thing.
I know in New Jersey, if we went to New York, we had to have a charter bus.
Yeah, he said for Manzoni also, anytime over the state line.
For the safety because you're going.
I'm sure there's an insurance thing there.
Now, southern states, it's different.
Any, anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed?
I don't have.
Sentience?
I oppose.
Motion carries 5-1-1.
No, I abstain. Oh, you abstain. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Item 8B, we have memorial benches.
I make a motion. Should we make a motion? Sorry. I make a motion to approve the installation of memorial benches in honor of Teresa Hina at Seymour High School and Holly Zura at Chapel Pressed School.
Yes, we have a motion by Jay, second by San. Any questions?
Good evening, everybody.
Well, he made the motion. I mean, we don't have.
I just, I just, I wanted to make sure before I go forward, as the kickoff club did, to make sure it's okay with you. to make sure it's okay with you, that we do, in fact, have benches made and installed among the school property. So one would be in honor of Teresa, it would be placed at the high school, and the other one would be in honor of Holly Zura, who died during COVID. She was the secretary at Chatfield, so we would put one at Chatfield, and we would put one at the high school. And we just wanted to make sure it was okay before we go ahead and order them. We're gonna have them built by the high school. High school shops are gonna build them for us, and they've gotten prices, but we haven't, you know, I haven't given them the green light yet, I just wanted to make sure it was okay. So they're hoping that they could build them before the end of the school year. And so if they do, then I think I would work with Mr. Conners and Public Works to have them maybe installed just before school started, if in fact that works out that way, so that they'd be in place for the start of school in the fall. So, if it's okay with you, that would be great.
This is very special, Linda.
Anybody have any questions? Yes?
Will there be an appropriate plaque?
Yes, we will put, they're gonna be benches that have backs and arms, so in the middle of the back, we will put a plaque with their name on the benches.
Because there, there's one at the middle school.
Right, there's one of them.
Oh, yeah.
And on one of our
The one for Cindy, yes, that one's a stone. This won't be stone, this will be, this, we're looking at treks, you know, so they don't
Hold up well.
It'll hold up well, which I think all the benches on the property, like at the high school, are made of, and whatever. So, you know, that's what they gave me prices for, so, yeah.
Will the benches be permanent or are you gonna fix?
Yes, public, I talked to Tim, and we'll work with Public Works, and they're gonna make the legs of the bench metal. So, they'll be metal legs so that they can put them into cement, you know, so that they are permanent, so that they're there the next day.
I was just a curiosity question, if you have a location for them yet, for them yet?
Well, we were just kind of, kind of throwing around, we were thinking at the high school, I would talk to Jim about, you know, what he thought, but there's a piece of grass in the front of the high school where the American flag is, it's looking at the high school and/or it's looking at the driveway driving up. We were thinking there, and at Chatfield, if you're looking at Chatfield School, they put the new swing setup. And then if you walk down the grassy area towards the playscape, somewhere between the swings and the playscape, because there's grass there and there's no, I don't think there's any benches. I think you come to the picnic table that they have there, so that's what we were thinking. But I, I mean, we're open to, you know, placement, we didn't get that for yet. But I would work with the principals on it, you know, what they thought was best.
Very good job.
Okay.
All right, if there's no any, if there are no other questions?
Just, just to say thank you.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I'll say it.
All those in favor?
Who seconded?
I did again, yeah.
Jay, and opposed, extensions, seven, zero, zero.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
All right, item 8B, we have the awards advisory committees. First up, the 2023 Drummer Excellence in Education Award.
Just like to say, the committee did an excellent job with the process. Eddie and Chris served on that, and again, done a great job in the preparation of all the nominations in the process.
How are we supposed to do this? We are announcing names now, or are they all notified?
I think we've notified, I think we've just named them in the past, because in June, we have them.
Come, yeah.
Next month, we have the awards meeting.
I don't know the time. We've notified them because we have a vote on it, in case there, in case there's somebody that would be a host.
Are we saying names in the motion?
I would.
I don't remember what they've done in the past.
I think we have to.
No, we didn't in the past, the way it was done last year was just to accept the recommendation.
Oh, okay.
Right now, I haven't thought of it.
If I could make a motion to accept the recommendation of the awards committee for all five awards at once?
I'll second that motion.
I don't see why not, I like your thought. We have a motion by Ms. Harmeling, second by Mr. Schmello, to accept all five awards from the advisory committee.
If the motion could reflect actual names of the award, not the recipients, that would be great. Really short-handedly tonight.
All right, that's, all right, the range is done. Uh, any questions, issues, concerns? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries seven, zero, zero.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the
Can I, before we go there, can I ask a question there? Are we going to, or who's going to, you're the chair of the, no, you're the chair of the other committee. We need to notify the people who nominated each of them to be invited to present the award. We changed that in the last couple of years, it used to be before done by board members. So I, somebody is gonna have to
We'll do that, and also too, with the awards part, quite a bit, I'd like also for the Board of Ed to be involved with some of these awards that we give on them, if you could, and we'll work that out as well. But we'll, we'll get in touch with each of the person who may be nominated.
And we decided to have it separate.
Yes.
Oh, separate, yes.
Separately, yeah, that was, that was a very odd name last year.
And, and, and again, to piggyback off what Dr. Compton said, that, you know, good suggestion, in case some of the people who nominated them would be nervous or might not want to present the award. So that's what I think you were thinking, right?
Just looking at who nominated, I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Jay, you have something?
Maybe just as a suggestion, Dr. Blood appears as the chair of that committee.
Yes.
Yes.
So maybe we could invite that individual to come, you know, just give a little overview before we start that process. Again, as we're kind of expanding and having just be the awards along the same lines, I think maybe we could, you know, get
Get her involved.
Get other people involved, if possible, so maybe we could just quickly, in the next week or so, send out a preview of what that looks like, and if there's other community members.
I think that'd be good, because we were able to get representatives this time from all of the schools, and to totally follow the guidelines. It was good this time, we had everybody in attendance and represented. It's very good.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda, I don't remember the number, because I had it at 8C. 8C, the Class of 2022 inductees at Seymour High School Alumni Hall of Fame.
Welcome by Jay.
Second.
Any discussions, you wanna read your names, or?
Read about
I was just adding it to the agenda first.
Oh, okay.
I think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so go with the agenda first.
Yeah. All those in favor? Opposed, seven, zero, zero.
I'd like to make a motion to induct, or, excuse me, to adopt the resolution, inducting the Seymour High School Alumni Hall of Fame Class of 2022. I think that's the same motion, but just in case. The resolution would be presented, sorry, to the following inductees, Eugene Coppola, the Class of 1956, Bobby Keller, Class of 1978, Elise Coomer, Class of 1966, Hannah LaPresty, Class of 1925, Paul Pollock, Senior Class of 1936, dated at Seymour, Connecticut, adopted by the Board of Education on this 1st of May, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Sorry, 23.
All right, motion by Jay, second by Ed, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, motion passes seven, zero, zero.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda, the distinguished alumnus for the Class of, or, excuse me, the 2023 Distinguished Alumnus Award.
Motion by Jay, do you have a second?
8D, second.
Second, Ms. Schmello. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed, extensions, okay.
It is my honor to award the 2023 Distinguished Alumnus Award to Dr. Cynthia C. Turenecki, a 1973 graduate of Seymour High School, in, in, along with her classmates of the Class of 1973, for the 50th anniversary.
Is that a motion?
I'm very interested.
Yeah, I am too.
Want to make a motion to?
I'm making a motion to award, that we award, the 2023 Distinguished Alumnus Award to Dr. Cynthia C. Turenecki, a graduate of the 1973 Class at Seymour High School.
Many men, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I thought we were doing the whole class, that's what
No, sorry.
I'm done now.
All right, motion by Jenny, do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Ms. Baboudiak, any other discussion?
We know that
Just a quick question, so that was a secondary point, do we have to make a motion to honor the Class of 1973? She happens to also be a member of that class at the graduation. That was brought up in our meeting, and I just wasn't sure if we had to make a secondary motion to that. Or, that's right.
I don't know if we
Why don't we do that?
Well, we did it last year.
We're gonna do it by, I think it'll be fine, if you just include them
I don't remember if we did a motion, but there was a sign out there and stuff, so maybe that's something we should start to
But I don't understand, we just
She just so happens to be a member of the Class of 1973.
Yeah.
And this year is 50 years, and last year
We recognize
We recognized the Class of 1972 during the graduation ceremony, but there was a sign out there. And that was mentioned at our meeting on Friday, and so
So I don't understand, so every year, we're just gonna honor the class that graduated 50 years before?
I think it's a good thing, if you know that we'd like to attend.
I don't think the distinguished alumni needs to come from that.
Right.
No, not by any means, it just so happens.
Coincidence for this year, I don't know.
Yeah, that won't happen every time, there's somebody out of the 50-year class, but it just so happens this lady was very distinguished, just
I'm, I'm thinking along with Chris's things.
We don't need to
With that, I mean, to do that every year, then it almost becomes mundane, or, or
Well, that, that won't happen, it's just, it was very
Well, if you do it every year, it'll, Dr. Compton, will become mundane.
Well, we're, we're just talking about inviting though, they can invite the 50-year class to come back. They do a reunion, I mean, most of
That's, but that's not having to do with us.
No, you wouldn't have to include them in anything about graduation, okay? I think it's a good thing.
Well, we just have a motion for
Yes, for her.
That recipient. Is there anything else about that?
I will discuss more, I guess, in June, at the awards.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, extensions, passes seven, zero, zero. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? All right, item nine, we have information, interim principal
Assistant principal.
Assistant.
It'll be about 25 days, he's going to assist Bungay, and also, we've had the other assistant principal, Stacy, that's been doing some help at Bungay, and so we're all gonna be a team. We're working together, the two principals and Stacy, and John has been a former principal, has been a former director of curriculum instruction, and he's had many years of experience, and we're lucky he's even available. So thi- this is a good thing to finish out the year. We didn't want to advertise, or there's not enough time left, and it just wouldn't take somebody out of the classroom or whatever right now, this is less disruption at this time, it's not that long left.
All right, the rest of the stuff in there, information, graduation, committee reports, recognitions.
Can I have a quick question?
Yep.
The staff transfers, are they for next year?
Yes, they're for music. Because we
It's for next year. Yes, yes, yeah, okay, great, yeah. And I just have to
Yeah, we've had good teamwork with the middle school and the high school administration. We met today with the principals, assistant principals about scheduling, and now we're gonna be with two of those music teachers and have some great teamwork going on.
Any questions on the information section? All right, item 10, Board of Ed comments, not much, thanks to Mrs. Bruno for running the meeting last year, last month. Everybody had the top 10 students that was in the packet. And although we don't have a big house out there, we have some Seymour folks. The vote is Thursday, please come out and support us and spread the word. I'll go down this way, any comments?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a comment to the empty room. There is so much chatter on social media, so many people voicing opinions, all of which are valued, but no one has asked us any direct questions. I asked the administration tonight if any FOI requests had come in, for so many questions that have been raised and just kind of left hanging in the, in the air, and no one has asked for any information, no one has asked for any clarification. So, my true hope is that people who may or may not be listening online, come and ask questions. And, and a vote of no is not a positive way to express dissatisfaction with something. All that will do is take the district backwards. So, if people are dissatisfied with something that the district is doing, come and talk to us. But to express dissatisfaction through a no isn't, isn't gonna help anyone get what they want. So I just really urge everyone at this late time to come out and vote yes, and come to us and, and talk to us and ask questions. To an empty room, thank you.
Now, I forgot, I have to circle back.
Uh, ditto what Ms. Harmeling said, and also, thank you to the, and again, to the Wildcat Kickoff Club for their donations. It's huge for the school and all of the students, especially members of other sports teams and PE students. I don't know where we would have found the money to get the equipment that they got us, so it's massively, massively helpful.
Um, I just kind of piggyback off your point, there's a lot of talk, if you've been at the budget hearings, the finance meetings, that there's a misconception about us being super top-heavy. Mr. Bucci's not here, but during this week, I had asked him to pull together some information on probably past five or six years. So, every single position that we have, from Dr. Compton to our assistants, to either Dr. Compton or in the past, to Ms. Tenza, since the days that Mr. Beldon was our business manager, not taking into account increases in salary, we are $163,000 less in 2023 than we were when Mr. Beldon was our business manager. So to say that we are top-heavy, we've done everything, as everybody knows, to get those numbers down. I have signs for all of you, if you would like to see me out after, they're in my car, but it's not raining.
I just want to clarify that, when, when Mr. Beldon was here, he was an associate superintendent in charge of finances and stuff there. And then, wh- when I was the chair, we eliminated that position specifically to go to a business manager because of the cost factor.
And the same goes with the associate superintendent. So, we have, we have made, we have made changes there as well, so.
That's all I have.
I could super quick piggyback on that, so, so headcount may be the same, but I love the fact that we can definitively say the salaries for the administrative positions are lower. And I always like to kind of think through any professional services organization, because that's what a school because that's what a school system is. You, no one would be able to find one that has twelve leaders and three hundred staff. It, there is no such service organization that would operate that way. And I think people kind of forget that, too.
Very small, thin, we are very lean. I, I, I'm going to really emphasize that. We have done everything that we could with the realignment. We didn't abolish some positions, because you never know what might lie out there in years to come. But I'm telling you, this, this, we, we are down as lean as we can be, and we've totally done our due diligence in, in every way that we could, and those, those factual monies are exactly what, I mean, exactly what the cost savings have been.
Yeah. If anyone's interested, I'll run for you, but I can forward that to everybody if you need it, talking points or whatnot. Um, yeah. All right. Uh, Dr. Compton, your report?
Yeah, I'd like to be very quick. I would like to just say that the last two weeks have been some lot of great things. Um, I'd just like to emphasize that with Bungie School, uh, Mrs. Feige and Mrs. Reed, you were a part of, with the recognition with the Seymour School Security Officer, and with Officer Rob Denard, and all of the great recognition, uh, with the TV station. It was just awesome. It's just such a way to showcase what, what our school security officers do, and I just thought it was wonderful. Also, with gun safety, with Mr. Kearns, we, we had great sessions last week. Uh, we had, uh, two TV stations, uh, that came, and this is really something as far as gun safety. Kudos to our parents who agreed for this training about gun safety. Our little ones, you could tell, they took it very serious. Uh, I also, one of the TV stations, Jay, gave you credit. This was your vision with Mr. Kearns several years ago. You wanted to see this in place, so now this has become a reality. And where we currently are, I think it's really something that all Connecticut schools should do, when you really think about it, and the importance of school safety. This, this could really be a model and go after. They did a great job with the training, uh, the chief, the chief of police, well, the police department was involved in this training as well. So I just want to say it was very well done, and they're going to be doing it at Chatfield on May twenty-fourth and May twenty-sixth. There'll be grades first through fifth, and involve kindergarten, but the kids seem to be very responsive, and I, I thought it was good. Very student, definitely on their level with what they needed to hear. I, I was touched by it. Um, I just want to mention, make sure that you look at our little updates. Uh, Friday, I also attended along with our principals. Uh, Mrs. Feige, we attended the, uh, the South Central Superintendent's Association luncheon, where we honor kids from each of the schools. It's very well attended. Uh, like I said, it was just a, a great afternoon. I just also want to remind you that, um, another thing with these moving up ceremonies and graduation, Bungie School is going to be on the same Friday as the graduation date, and it's going to be at nine thirty. Chatfield LaPresty is the day before, on Thursday at one forty-five. I'll send you reminders again. And Seymour, uh, High School, of course, is six o'clock, and then a rain date for Monday. And then the middle school is at two o'clock on Friday, because they're, they also use the, the field as well. So, um, like I said, we've had a lot of things happening, a lot of good things, um, as far as getting ready for the testing, the AP placement, advanced placement test are starting this week as well. So we've got a lot of things going on. Uh, I would like to say also that the state level, uh, has just recently honored one of our teachers, Josh Schwett, in the Rock and Roll Foundation. Uh, he's one of the second ones selected in the cohort. It's, it's quite an honor to, to be selected to do that, so I just want to say congratulations to him. All lucky he was a part of making the recommendation, and, uh, so we're going to be having some, uh, sessions with that as well. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Compton? All right. If there's none, it's not an ad hoc time.
A question for Jenny.
A question by Ms. Harville. Second. Second, Chatfield, all those in favor? Opposed. You have Jim opposed.